of interest and penalties on taxes being assigned to the Tax Inferior Committee Chairman Massaro. We have before us Communication F from Mayor Nancy R Rossi in regards to a public health resolution being assigned to Council as a whole Chairwoman Hamilton. We have also before us Communication G from the Building Oversight Chairman Carney in regards to the Malloy School Solar Field Project being assigned to the Sustainability Committee, Chairwoman Finelli. And we also have before us Communication H from Mayor Nancy R Rossi in regards to a resolution for the Office of Policy and Management for the COVID-19 Grant Application being assigned to the Finance Committee Chairwoman Hosky. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We will enter into committee meetings. The first committee is the Finance Committee Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairman. Your time is now 7:26 and your Finance Committee is in session. Members present are Councilwoman Bruno, Councilwoman Cohen, Councilwoman Massaro, and Councilwoman Hamilton and myself acting as chair. We have before us this evening Communication B from the City Engineer Abdul Qadir in regard to the application of DECD grant dollars for the Beach Street project. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton. Can I have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman Massaro, Bruno, Cohen. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly say that absolutely in favor of this and I only because I had had several constituents contact me regarding Beach Street. And I just want to assure everyone, once again, like we said at the last meeting, the residents, the nearby neighbors of that district had a very, very productive meeting with our public with our Public Works Commissioner and Abdul and Mark Payne. And it was extremely productive and that I know that the conversations will continue. This is strictly to fund the project, but but again, it continues to be very collaborative with the neighbors. That was all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have before us Communication C from Chief Joseph Purno in regards to animal shelter donations. I'd like to bring this out favorably. Have a motion. Councilwoman Bruno, thank you. Can I have a second? Councilwoman Cohen and Massaro, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have before us Communication H from Mayor Nancy R Rossi in regards to a resolution for the Office of Policy and Management, the COVID-19 Grant Application. I'd like to bring this out favorably. Have a motion. Thank you, Councilwoman Cohen. Can I have a second? Councilwoman Massaro and Bruno, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The time is now 7:29 and your Finance Committee is closed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Next committee is the Legislative Matters Committee, Councilwoman Gallagnato.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is 7:29 and your Committee on Legislative Matters is now in session. Committee members present are Councilwoman Bruno, Councilwoman Johnston, Councilwoman Finelli, and Councilwoman Cohen and myself acting as chair. Tonight, we have before us Communication A from Mayor Nancy R Rossi in regards to a special taxing district for the Havens Project. I'm looking for a motion to approve this communication.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I need a second. Second from Liz from Councilwoman Johnston and Councilwoman Finelli. I would like to open this up for any discussion. I believe we have Lee. Lee, you are here, correct? He was here earlier.
Hello?
There you are. Thank you, Counselor. Is there any discussion? I see Councilman Cohen, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Mitch. Actually, I have two very I totally support this and I just have two very brief questions. I believe they're both for Lee. Lee, regarding the taxation district itself, is it just the existing footprint of where the Havens is going to go? Or I go back a few years when they first came up with this concept that eventually there might be, let's say, a Havens North if they decided to expand. Would this just be for the current footprint or would they have to go back to get an additional taxing district if they expanded further in the years to come?
Yeah, no, it's just for the Councilman Cohen, to the chair, it's just for the existing property owned by the Haven in that area. They're paying their own lobbyists to lobby for this legislation, so I don't think they'd want to pay for additional lobbying work for property they don't own.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if it was retroactive or whatever because they've already kind of, you know, they've already applied, if you will, but as long as it's just the existing property that's already been they've already purchased, if you will, and no other property, it's just this, then I don't have a second question then. One question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Bruno?
Thank you, Councilman Mitch. Lee, so I have a question for you. When the bond is paid back in full, would that mean that the tax goes back to its regular tax revenue? You know, in other words, what they tax the customer to go back to its regular taxes once the bond is paid back in full?
Well, remember, this is property that's owned by one entity, so they're really taxing themselves. There's a special taxation district that's really taxing themselves. So what they're going to do is this is really a vehicle, the way these, there's about, I don't know, a couple dozen of them in the state. Years ago, there were two or three failed ones, so we've learned from the failures. And basically, this is a vehicle to borrow money, so they get money at a low interest rate because they float bonds. So the taxes will really be assessed through the leases that they have with the existing tenants. They'll just tack on lease payments. I mean, ultimately, like anything else in life, the consumers of the products will probably bear the burden of the, you know, the cost of the paying back the notes because that's the way the system would be designed. But the main reason for this vehicle, this is a vehicle simply to borrow money at a lower rate than would be allowed under a commercial lending system.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on my committee have a question? Go ahead, Councilman Finelli.
Kind of a follow-up to Robert's question then. So when this increased tax rate goes into effect, it would essentially be there forever for as long as the Havens are there. It would never drop back down to the current rate?
This, so the district, there are special, for instance, your Allentown Fire Department, Central Fire District, West Shore Fire District, those are all special tax districts in a sense. They're for fire districts. New Haven has special tax districts. Downtown New Haven has its own special tax district. So the property owned by the Haven would be a special tax district. And if, I don't know, I suppose, they couldn't do it under their existing plan because their existing plan limits what they can do. They can do one thing, which is the development that they proposed. But if they got permission to do something else, I guess, and then sold piecemeal parcels which don't exist anymore, I guess you could have a tax district with separate property entities in it. You'd know that in advance and ultimately, if you wanted to, it wouldn't serve the purpose for which this legislation was proposed. So we would be seeking the legislature to, if we wanted to, we would be seeking the legislature to reverse the taxation district. And I would point out that, you know, if you wanted, for instance, if you didn't want fire districts, it's the same process. Obviously, what holds the fire districts in place is the public positive view of having fire districts. So I think you can rest assured that if the public thought that this taxation district was not serving its purpose, then, you know, they're outvoted every voter in the city to one currently. So I don't think it would be difficult to reverse the tax district if it was not serving its purpose. I mean, you'd have to have a legislative session, so you'd have to live with it for six months or something, I guess. But its purpose currently is simply to provide the owner with a vehicle to borrow, you know, they're going to float bonds, so they'll be able to borrow money at a much reduced rate than they would pay commercially if they just borrowed money, construction loan and then gap loan and then deed of loan.
You lost that, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, because I got confused myself, so. So we're making a special taxation district just so they can borrow money at a lower rate. Is that correct? Do I understand that properly?
Okay. The city council is not creating the district. The city council is telling the legislature that they're okay with creation of the district. The legislature is creating the district.
Okay.
Once created, the only real advantage for the one single property owner for the district is that they can then float bonds, which they couldn't otherwise, and that they use the bonds then to build the project. It is a vehicle used by, like I say, a couple dozen other special tax districts in the state.
So we make, so the legislation makes the special tax district for the Havens group, which in turn then can, did you, I heard you used the word lease in there before, so they would up the leases on their tenants to pay back these bonds? Is that how I understand it? Because I'm confused.
Well, it's their land, so I suppose they don't have to do anything and they could just pay back the bonds themselves. But how it's been used in other districts, my guess would be that when they do leases for their commercial tenants, that they will add what we call a tax escalation clause, so that the district would assess a tax and then the owner, the Haven, would be able to put that tax on the lease, which is the standard language in a commercial lease. You have a tax clause and a tax escalation clause, which allows the landlord to recoup both tax payments and increase in tax payments over the term of a lease. So my guess would be, yes, that they would somehow put in lease agreements the ability to get reimbursed so that the bonds are paid, which I think, you know, the bondholders are going to want to know that they're going to get paid, so that's probably going to be something the bondholders would like to see as well.
So that makes sense for the bondholders saying, okay, we have no problem floating you these bonds as we know that this is a special taxation district and you can pay us back through a special program here. Is that correct?
Well, no.
I just won't make sure I understand this correctly. I'm all, I'm in support of it. I'm just a little confused on it.
The bondholders, the first, the owners of the property, right, are going to be liable to the bondholders for payment, right?
Right.
So however, most bond agreements, take the bonds that the city floated for the high school, okay? If you read the bond prospectus carefully, which unfortunately I'm required to do, what you will find in there is there are a number of avenues by which bondholders can get repaid. And believe it or not, and it's prefied on the list, one of them is they could actually take possession of the high school if you didn't make the payments. But the first, but that's not the, that's not the first choice that they get to make and probably it's not the first choice they would want. The first choice that the bondholders want is they want to get paid, so they would want to get paid out of the owner, like whoever owns the property. Now, if the owner, think about it just yourself, if the owner has leases that are generating income, well, of course, under the bond prospectus, they're going to be able to recover the rent amounts for those, for those leases up to the amount that they're owed on the bonds. That would make, I can't believe that wouldn't be in a bond prospectus. And then lastly, they're going to be able to take possession of the land subject to all, obviously, all the city taxes, fire district tax and all any and all city permits and fees that are owed at the time.
Any more discussion from my committee? Okay. Did I see your hand go up, Councilwoman Bruno? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'll make it quick. I am also in support of this, but I'm a little confused on it. So Lee, isn't there a tax that's added? Don't they add an additional tax to this bond? And that's where they get the difference? Like, I was only assumption it was an additional tax that had added to this bond. Is that not the case?
Okay, they're a special tax district, but understand that because they're the only owner of the property in the district, they would be taxing themselves. So yes, they are taxing themselves technically. But then my guess is, because this is how it's always done in other instances where these districts have been put in place, my guess is that they are going to seek to recoup that tax that they're charging themselves to the leaseholders that are in their various buildings that are leasing space in the project. So you'll have lease agreements that allow them to recoup this tax. I don't think, I mean, they, you know, they're a for-profit entity, so they're looking to do a development that makes a profit, that makes money. And so the purpose of the tax is really to make the project viable, and it really is just to reduce the borrowing costs so that they can borrow money, get the project up, and then, you know, then they have bond payments just like they'd have loan payments that have to be paid back. Obviously, I mean, they'll be liable to pay the money back themselves, the owner of the property, but they're creating a vehicle to pay the tax, I'm sure, through their lease hold payments, so that they have a vehicle where they have income coming in to make the payments.
So this isn't added to sales tax?
They could add a, they could add a sales tax on transactions within their district, but that's not the design of this project. That sales tax would not be assessed, though, on the individual buying. That sales tax would be assessed, again, on each individual leaseholder. So they could say we're going to, they could do a scheme where they're going to design the tax based on the amount of sales. I doubt that that would, that takes more accounting, of course. So generally, it would make more sense that they would have it just tied to the lease payments. It would be easier to account for, it'd be easier to collect, you'd know how much you're going to get, it would be a more definite payment. But again, I mean, they get to decide that, it's their tax district. They can decide how they're going to tax themselves so that they pay back the bonds. And of course, the bondholders buy the bonds, so they get to know the kind of instrument that they're provided. I think what's confusing you is that there's only one owner. So unlike, for instance, the special tax district in the city of New Haven taxes all the downtown property at a higher rate. That was a vehicle to generate more income, to increase street cleaning, increase police presence, increase landscaping around the green and, you know, do another bunch of different things that would make the downtown area a little nicer. But again, you have a lot of property owners in the downtown area. Here, you only have one property owner, they're taxing themselves. So that's why the vehicle really is only a vehicle to create bonds, that really just a financing vehicle.
Thank you. I have nothing else. Mitch? Thank you, Chair, Councilman Bruno. So I'm good for now. I guess I could throw it out to the rest of the council at this point, Mr. Chairman, if I wanted to.
You could do that if you wanted to. It's your prerogative.
So, um, I think I would do that now, yes, absolutely. So I'll open it up to the full council here. Is there anybody else on the council who has any questions about this? I see one hand out. There's Councilman Donovan. Go ahead, Councilman Donovan.
Yes, Lee, you're still there, correct?
Yes.
Is there a maximum that they can go up on this tax within themselves? They called, they want to go up 20%. They can do that, right? And first of all, it doesn't affect the residents whatsoever, correct?
No, it, well, I mean, it affects to the extent you consider them a, they're not, they don't reside there, so I would not consider them a resident. It doesn't affect anybody who resides in West Haven. So no. Yeah, I mean, I guess they could tax themselves, I mean, it's kind of what the market will bear. So, you know, they have to design, they're going to have to design a bond product that makes sense. And again, it's not, this isn't so unique that it's ever been done before. So, you know, the Wall Street broker will really design what they need. It's going to depend on what the payment is, the necessary payment is to pay back the bonds, and that's, that will be the level by which they need taxation. I mean, they're not going to have a fire department, they're not going to have a police department, they're not going to have schools, they're not going to have any residents. So they only need one vehicle, which is, you know, bonds, and they want the bonds in order to, you know, it's just a different vehicle than getting a commercial loan. It's a more preferred interest rate. I think they'll save considerable amount using the bond vehicle than if they use commercial paper.
Just one more thing, Councilman Gallagnato?
Go ahead, sir.
I'm, I'm, this group is starting to kill me, to be honest with you. I don't like, I don't mind helping people out as long as they're going to get things I understand it's going to help them, you know, get their bond back, pay their bond back quicker and everything. I'm not sure I'm for this. I really would like to hear everybody's opinion before I make a determination on it. But that's pretty much right now. That's, that's all I got to talk about right now on it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did I see your hand up?
You did. Thank you, Councilman Gallagnato. So, Lee, let's just walk through the scenarios to try to keep it as, I don't know, simple as possible. So, so all that we're doing tonight is giving the mayor the authority to send the draft language of the legislation to our delegation to potentially get that on a state committee because we don't have the authority to do this. The state would have to do that. So so far, that's correct, right?
Yes. I think all we're looking for is either, your vote is either not discouraging that activity or encouraging that activity. The legislation's already drafted, they already have a lobbyist. I think most of the legislative delegation has already seen the legislation with the one change that I've recommended, which will be the change that the legislative delegation, if it is put on the floor, recommends.
And we won't lose local control. So even though it's a special taxation district, they still have to abide by all the ordinances and the planning and zoning requirements and anything else that anybody else would have to. Is that correct?
Correct. Not dissimilar to your fire district. Just because you have a fire district doesn't mean you don't have ZVA, wetlands, planning and zoning, permit requirements, you know, blight fines, the whole nine yards.
Right. So they're not autonomous. All that they're doing, if this, if the legislature permits this, as Councilman Gallagnato said, they're going to utilize this to bring in some bonding revenue to, in theory, get this project underway, and those bonds are through either lease agreements or an additional percentage on the sales tax just within their footprint, right?
Yes. If they don't engage in any commercial activity, they'd be floating bonds that they'd have to pay back, that the entity would have to pay back themselves. So I can guarantee you that the bondholders are going to demand the development activity or they're going to, you know, they're going to foreclose on, they're going to call the bond.
So, so which brings me to my last point. So if that should happen and they call the bond, and then the city obviously has some financial interests with regards to taxes on that particular property, what position is the city in to recoup that?
The city, as the case I gave you, the Georgetown case, the city, that Danbury brought that case, the city is in the first position. So you could have a scenario where the taxes are all paid up and, but the bondholders aren't paid, and so the bondholders would own the property and then they would have to pay the tax. If you have a situation where it's truly upside down, where the taxes aren't being paid and the bondholders aren't being paid, a couple things, the city can recoup their tax money either by foreclosing on the property or by demanding payment directly from the entity. City always has that option. Generally, what ends up happening is foreclosure, the secured piece of land is the best route to go in order to secure payment, so the city forecloses. So this is legislation that where the city will always remain whole in terms of the city's ability to collect taxes. And again, it provides the entity with the most favorable, if the, the only way they gain, the only way the entity gains anything through this process is by floating bonds, and the only reason they float bonds is to develop the project. So, you know, I suppose, you know, you could have a scenario where somebody float, I mean, you'd have to be leaving the country or something. If somebody were to float bonds, keep the money and never pay them back, I know that people see that in movies and they see that in those television programs about greed and whatever, but generally, those are, you know, con men. Those are not large entities. The Simon Group is, you know, the largest developer of mall space in the nation, and in fact, our own police pension has stock in the Simon Group. It's considered a fairly sound entity. So there really is no evidence that anything untoward like that would ever occur with this group.
So the city's in first position. How about another special taxation district? What position would they be in? So what position would the Center Fire Department be in to collect what they, what they have to collect?
Ahead of the bondholders, again. Don't take my word for it, the Connecticut State Supreme Court says that, and we're going to make it part of the legislation. So they would not be ahead of the city of West Haven, sorry, sorry, but they would be right behind us and ahead of the bondholders.
All right. And is there, lastly, is there any, you said this has been done a couple of dozen times before. In any of the legislation that it's linked to a particular project, is there a completion date language that's put in the legislation, like, you know, we're going, we'll go along with this as long as the project completed at the date?
Generally, taxation districts stay in place for so long as the voters want them in place. So if the voters don't want taxation districts in place, you call your legislative delegation together and say to approve in legislative session 2021, we would like that legislation reversed. and say to approve in legislative session 2021, we would like that legislation reversed. You could do that at any time. I mean, we could, that has been tried and can be done, for instance, with the fire districts right now, if you wanted to. But there has to be a desire among the public to motivate their legislators to do that.
Yeah.
And if you did that with existing bonds, the legislature would have to give permission as to how that bonds will be handled. But that's how it would be done. It doesn't, it doesn't, it only lasts for so long that the public wants it to last.
Yeah. I mean, listen, I get it, and I understand where Councilman Donovan's coming from, that, you know, we, you know, it's just, it's been a, it's been an extremely, excruciatingly slow pace. And we don't need to get into the reasons why, but again, if it's, if there's, if it's, there's no ill effect on the, on the community and on the taxpayer and on the residents, by not doing this, I don't want, I don't want this to be the excuse as to why this doesn't happen. Well, because the council and the legislators didn't approve this special taxation district, so that's why we're not coming. So if it really has, if it has no impact to the community and we don't give up anything and we're still in first position, then I'm of the opinion that let's send it up to the Connecticut Legislature and let them act. I'm good, Mitch. Councilman Gallagnano, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any more discussion? Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, everything that our chairman Quagley Annie said, but also just to address, I'm Councilman Donovan, who asked for our feelings on this, is I think anything we can do that doesn't harm the residents and can somehow provide a no-excuse reason for the developers to expedite or accelerate or to make business easier or to work with delegations. And if, and if we can at least get this over to our state legislatures, you know, we'll see if it goes or not, but we should do everything in our, in our power to not provide a excuse or a concern, especially due to the slowness of the development itself. So I am for this. Thank you.
I'll say, Councilman Cohen. Any more discussion? As I see none. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Chairman, and that concludes the business of legislative matters at 7:58.
Thank you, Councilman Gallagnano. I'd remind everybody that if they're not speaking, that please keep their microphones on mute. And we will go to the Tax Referral Committee, Councilman Massaro.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is at 7:59, and the Committee of Tax Referral is in session. The members present at the council is Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Colin, Councilman Galliano, Ms. Councilwoman O'Connor, and myself as chair. And we got in front of us right now an issue of a tax referral, which is very, very, first time in a long time, is very, very informative that the taxpayer, Torina Nelson, is applying for a tax payment. And I like to bring this out in favor because she does fit in the poverty line of this, of this year. And I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion approved.
And I'm looking for a second. Any discussion? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The Committee for Tax Referral is closed now at 8:00 P.M. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Massaro. Our next committee is the Sustainability Committee, Councilwoman Finelli.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 8:00 P.M., and the Sustainability Committee is now in session. Members present are Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilwoman Hosky, Councilwoman Johnston, Councilwoman O'Connor, and myself, Councilwoman Finelli, acting as chair. Tonight, we have before us Communication G, brought from the Building Oversight Chairman Ken Carney in regards to the Malloy School solar field project. I would like to bring this out favorably. Do I have a motion? Okay. Motion, Liz, and second, by Colleen, thank you. And I think we have Chairman Carney here, if anyone has any questions. Oh, Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli.
Point of order. So, Councilwoman Finelli, you could, you could open it up to the whole council, but I just want to point out, Councilman Bruno's on the committee.
Yeah, and I realized that as soon as I called in. We'll take questions from the committee first, and then I'll open it up to everyone. So I think, Councilwoman Hosky, do you have your hand raised?
Thank you. Ken, could you please do us the favor of explaining the money we're going to make, Ken Orley, the money, the money we're gonna make, the years of the lease, and I think there's some type of credit or a way for us to make additional funding and how that plays out?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So what we have here is a ground array to be placed up on city property by the old Malloy school. The way this works is the city will get a lease payment between $20,000 and $25,000 a year on a 20-year lease. All of the energy created from the ground array, every kilowatt hour, the city of West Haven enjoys a 15-cent credit to be applied to invoices, existing UI invoices of their choice. That is another $75,000 a year. So as the solar array creates kilowatts, the city enjoys a credit right on their UI bill. The city will then purchase electricity from the solar array at 9.5 cents. The spread between 9.5 cents and 15 cents, based on what this array can produce, is roughly $75,000. The contract is a 20-year contract. The city has the option to buy out of the contract at any time. All of the solar equipment is the responsibility of the solar company. The city has absolutely zero operational expenses at all and no capital expense expenses either. Every dime is paid for by the solar company. The unique thing about this particular deal, if you will, is the other 30 towns in Connecticut that enjoy this deal, they either get the lease payment or the credit, but not both. West Haven is unique in that the programs that were available when this came up has given us a total savings of $100,000 a year, not 75 or 25, but we're benefiting from both. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Sorry, cut you off. If you, yeah, if you have another question, you can.
So, yes, so I, you're right, because I was, when we were discussing it, I tend to know a little bit about electricity and solar. So I was like, oh, I was talking about the contracts. I was like, I don't know. It's very, very rare. We're gonna have to ask Ken. So you're absolutely right. I, that is very much a rarity. Like, I don't know that to be, I don't know, yes, that's impressive. My other question is this. I have been a big proponent of this solar stuff for a while, for a while. I'm always asking, like, you know, why, why aren't we doing this? Why aren't we doing this? And I know this is a stretch, but what about the other schools? I know we have Carrigan going, we have Bailey going, we got the high school, but we have so many other buildings. Is there like a five-year plan, a four-year plan? And I know a lot of it has to do with the roofs on the schools, but I'm just thinking that if we're saving $70,000 or we're gonna make $70,000, won't that pay for a roof? Won't that put a roof on Savin Rock to get the solar up there?
So let me just say a couple of things to try and answer that. Number one, West Haven is lacking other towns and districts in UI programs, solar programs, energy programs that save money, okay? We are at a very unique juncture, if you will, in that we have a mayor who is pushing for this to happen. We have a superintendent that is pushing for this to happen. We have a council and a board of ed who have passed all of the various motions and things that needed to be passed. The entire city of all elected officials are pushing for this to happen. In a short period of time, we've been able to achieve four solar programs on the tops of the schools. That would be Carrigan, Bailey, Malloy, West Haven High School. West Haven High School is in the final stages of being installed. Bailey is getting a new roof because of the solar program that's going there. Malloy and Carrigan will each lower the operational cost of the board of ed. We have the opportunity to move forward on other buildings. And if there are other areas of land that the city owns that we could put solar arrays on, that's something else we could look at. Right now, we're developing a relationship with these vendors. We're coming out of the, you know, out with our first project being completed, which will be the high school solar program. And I would say that this will continue, and there'll be more possibilities and opportunities in the near future.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Chair Finelli.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hamilton?
Hi, Ken.
Hello. Happy holidays.
To you also. So I read in the, in the communication that there would have to be insurance that's maintained by the leaseholders, by the leaseholder. They would have to have some kind of insurance. So I'm wondering, like, who? We're talking about a 20-year, who can make sure that insurance is permanent? Do you know that?
Usually, if you lapse on the notice, you go out immediately. The insurance, 100%, yes.
Thank you. Oh, let me, may I ask, follow up with something? And what exactly does the insurance insure?
So I've asked to attend this meeting tonight Attorney Studer, who negotiated this over three-and-a-half-month process. And I think he might be able to answer that question better than me. Steve, are you there?
Can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The question, the answer to your question is that the tenant is required to keep the property insured against any kind of property damage to the solar array itself as well as general liability insurance, so in case someone gets hurt on the property. And if there, as Ken said, there is our notice requirements to the city, and it would be a breach of the lease if the tenant were not to comply with the various insurance requirements, which, by the way, were reviewed by the city's insurance consultant.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the committee? One second, I'm sorry. Ken, I just have one question. I know we're talking specifically about the Malloy project right now, but can you just tell us the other schools that are in the works with the solar panels, are they with the, well, for the high school and Bailey and Carrigan, are they through the same company and do we have similar deals with them? Or does that still have to be determined?
So it's a different program. The other four projects create electricity for the particular building that they're on to buy at a reduced rate. That rate is as low as 4.5%. And if you look at the way budgets are structured, the beneficial, the people who benefit from that, the whole city benefits from that, but the board of ed specifically benefits from those programs because they're the ones that are paying for those electrical invoices, if you will, or bills. What's unique about the solar program on the ground is the city is getting the direct benefit of that between the lease and the credits.
Okay. So Malloy is not actually being powered by this then? Or is it, and we're paying the bill with the credit we're getting back from the company?
So the way it works is Malloy is gonna be powered by a rooftop system. And where it gets complicated is the electricity that's produced by the ground array is going off into the grid, being monitored by the UI. What the UI does with it, we don't know or care, but every kilowatt hour that goes through the UI meter gets credited back to us in the form of 15 cents.
Okay.
We then, as a city, will purchase some of our electricity at 9.5 cents from the people who own the ground array.
Okay. So it's, so Malloy is being powered by this and we're also getting a credit, or?
Malloy has two, Malloy, Malloy School will have a rooftop unit that will power the school. This ground array, which happens to be on the Malloy property, okay, will come, will benefit the city financially through a lease payment and a credit for every kilowatt hour, roughly $100,000 a year.
Okay. And now the, the solar panels on the roof at Malloy, is that also part of the same deal? Or is that a separate thing that's being done?
Separate.
Okay.
Yeah, there's five separate deals, four are rooftops, one is the ground array.
Okay. I think that's where some of the confusion was. Thank you. I'll open it up now to, or actually, Councilman O'Connor?
Thank you. I just had one question. So with the Malloy project, people in the surrounding area, like homes and businesses, will be able to purchase electricity through that field?
No. The way it works is the UI will take the electricity from the solar array, and they'll give the city of West Haven a credit for it. The city will then buy electricity from the array at 9.5 cents. I do not, I don't know how, what the UI does with the power afterwards. It's all based on virtual meters, but I don't think someone's gonna be able to sign up and say, I wanna buy, I live next door, I wanna buy electricity from that. It doesn't work.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the council now. We'll start with Councilman Bruno.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli.
Ken, I got a question for you. Thanks for coming on tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm a little, just a little help, if you can give me. So I understand all of what's on the roof of Malloy and all that, but what I'm confused with is the back of the school, the land that they're leasing, right? Based on what you just said, those grids, that, that power's gonna go back to the UI, right?
Yes.
That being said, then why aren't we at a fixed lease rate, if you would? Let's say if it's 25 grand a year, why fluctuating between 20,797 and 25,000 per year? Why wouldn't we exercise the most money we can get out of it, seeing they're leasing the land to basically UIs getting the power?
So the way it works is the lease, my understanding is the lease agreement is based on how much power they can actually produce. And then it's somewhere between 20,000 change and 25,000 in a payment rent term, if you will, or lease term. So without the system being installed and being measured, we know we're somewhere between roughly 21 and 25. We also know we're somewhere between 70 and 80 on the credits.
Okay. So once it's installed, if the number comes out to be 23,000 a year, that's gonna be the number for the next 20 years?
I believe so, yes. That's my understanding.
Okay, Mr. Carney, thank you. Nothing else.
Thank you, Reverend. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ken and Mr. Studer for being here this evening. Most of my questions answered, and thank you for that. I'm just kind of curious, you know, obviously a lot of work went into this, a lot of study went into this for this particular piece of land, if you will, to put the arrays on. And I know, according to this draft agreement here, that it could take anywhere from 10 to 24 months to develop this. Having said that is, and I'm paraphrasing here, so bear Having said that is, and I'm paraphrasing here, so bear with me, that the necessary conditions need to present themselves so that the solar arrays are satisfactory. So I mean, has there been some testing already done? Is there a high probability that we will be successful? Or is there still more studies or testing to the land? I just wasn't sure what that statement meant.
I, I, they would not be offering us this program if they're more confident that it was going to produce what it's supposed to produce. If they go out there and they find an Indian burial ground, you know what I'm saying? They find buried asbestos, there's a problem. This is pretty much run-of-the-mill process at this point. I don't, they don't anticipate any issues. They even told me that if there were some type of contamination, which they don't think there is, they could use a ballot system to install the solar panels and not even go into the ground.
Okay, fair enough. I saw the phrase in there, Ken, and I was just kind of scratching my head. I figured there was so much work put into this. It seemed to be we're at the five-yard line here, is what I'm saying, in terms of entering development agreement. Okay. Right. That's really all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Mr. Studer.
Thank you. And does anyone else have Chairman Quagliani?
Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli. Ken, so there's like 2,600 panels going on the grounds of Malloy School. Is this something that needs to go through P and Z?
They're going to have to, yes, they'll get a permit. They're going to have to go through P and Z and building. And I also want to point out that the, the final solar field area has been reduced. I walked the property with the facilities team from the school, the board of ed. I had Mike McGrath out there, and we talked about every possible scenario we could think of. Fire trucks coming through, two fire trucks coming through, digging in the ground, anything that would affect the school. And we pushed the boundary of the solar field away from the school in order to achieve that. So, so at some point, that will become part of a legal document that will show exactly where that's going to go. But these guys can't just show up and install this field. They have to go through zoning and they have to go through building.
All right. And, and this project has no impact on the community garden, correct?
That is correct.
So will still continue on having the ability to have community members come and plant their, their vegetables and things?
That is correct.
And speaking of solar, so there's a project moving forward also that I saw that's going out to bid regarding Helm Street. Is this something that is part of this solar project collective? Or is this something outside of this?
Outside.
I think I can address that, Ken. So one of the things we did when we brought in, we brought in a professional team to maximize the solar advantages. And of course, the schools are where you get your best bang for your buck. Because as you heard, buyback agreement is what you want, and schools generate and, and use electricity. And so that is a nice symbiotic relationship. But we're able to use this professional group. So in other words, the other thing that the council should have confidence with is, the professional group is really the Titan Group is what they're called, and Ken mentions them in his memo. They're really what we depend on, that we're negotiating rates that are the right market rates and the lease payments and so on and so forth. They have the experience. And so they're, they're helping us set up the agreement. So we're leveraging them to try to exploit every positive possible venue for solar. And the only, you know, obstacle we're going to have in the future is when we exhaust the ability to buy the power, when we've purchased so much power from the solar development that the city can't justify buying any more power. So we'll continue to leverage this group. And, and of course, as Ken is becoming more expert in this area, we'll continue to leverage his free help and hopefully have more solar projects, but only on land that really can't be developed for any other purpose.
Thanks, Lee. That's helpful. And Ken, so, so last question. So based on some of the cost-benefit analysis that someone must have done regarding these, these projects, is there an estimated percentage that the board of ed should expect in a decrease in their utility costs?
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't have the numbers in front of me, the file on, on those particular projects. But if I remember correctly, I think Carrigan, Carrigan may have been 75,000 a year, Bailey was 100,000 a year, the high school was 150. They were huge numbers. Those aren't the exact numbers. I have a folder back in my office with all that in front of me. But the board of ed, I presented those numbers to the board of ed in, I think, at least two meetings. And everyone seemed very happy with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to impact any decision I have tonight. But if you could forward that to the council office, like it distributes to the council members, I think they'd be interested. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? And I just have one more question. I know I spoke to Lee about this earlier, but I just want to make sure before we vote. I know there's accessibility issues with the building, and it's unlikely we would need to use that as an elementary school in the foreseeable future anyway. But if down the road enrollment increased and we did need another elementary school and we wanted to utilize Malloy for that, this would not impact that in any way, correct?
It would not.
Okay. All right. If no one has any questions, then can we, for the Sustainability Committee, can we do a show of hands? Who's in favor? Any opposed? And I believe we have one abstention. So the motion carries. The time is 8:21, and that concludes the Sustainability Committee portion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli. Okay, we'll enter into unfinished business. We have none. So the council will convene as a whole again for committee reports. I could ask the clerk to read Communication D into the record.
Okay, we have before is Communication D from the Task Collector in regards to overpayment refunds for the month of December 2020, which will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you, Stacy. First committee to report out this evening is the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairman Quagliani. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of an application of the DECD grant dollars for the Beet Street project, reports that the committee met on the 20th day of December 2020 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. Whereas pursuant to PA 79-607, as amended, section 21, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the City of West Haven make an application to the state for 5,200,000 in order to undertake the Beet Street reconstructive project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council that its cognit, other conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by PA 79-607 as amended, section 21, that the filing of an application for the state financial assistance by the City of West Haven, the amount of 5,200,000 is hereby approved, and that the Mayor Nancy R. Rossi is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance. If such agreement is offered to execute any amendments, decisions, and provisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the City of West Haven that is adopts or has adopted as its polities to support the following non-discrimination agreements or warranties provided in subsection A1 of the Connecticut General Statute, section 4A-60 and 4A-60A respectively, as amended.
Grant dollars for the Beet Street project, as was read into the record. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Gallagnano, Cohen, Masaro, Bruno. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Is there anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of the animal shelter donations, reports that the committee met on the 20th day of December 2020 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. That the following donation to the Department of Police Service be approved and deposited into line item 10010000028285 animal shelter donations. Catherine Aguirre Reno for $100, Maureen Fallon for 50, and Bartis for 25, Karen Swaim for 25, Patrick Kelly for 150, and Wheat for $25.
Councilwoman Hosky has brought forward Communication C from Chief Joseph Perno in regards to animal shelter donations, as was read into the record. Is there a second? Kentucky Councilwoman Hamilton, is there any discussion? My only discussion is, is that my signal tonight is very unreliable. I'm going in and out. So just want to let you know, if all of a sudden I freeze, I can't help that. So anyway, any other further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? And this motion passes unanimously.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of a resolution for the Office of Policy and Management for COVID-19 application, reports that the committee met on the 20th day of December 2020 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby authorizes Mayor Nancy R. Rossi or her designees Frank Chablinsky and Mike Damassa to submit to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy Management all documentation and applications necessary for the reimbursement of all COVID-related expenses incurred by the City of West Haven. Further resolved, Mayor Nancy R. Rossi or her designee Frank Chablinsky and Mike Damassa are further empowered to allocate the designated COVID dollars pursuant to the requirements of the Office of Policy and Management for the reimbursement of the department line items where such COVID expenses have been incurred. She is further authorized to expend such dollars for the costs associated with emergency management COVID operations concurrent with the guidelines established by the Office of Policy and Management.
Councilwoman Hosky has brought forward Communication H from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi in regards to a resolution for the Office of Policy and Management for the COVID-19 grant application, as was read into the record. Is there a second? Councilman Masaro, Bruno, Cohen, is there any discussion? I do have one question, Lee, if you're on the line. So how is the allocation determined? Is there a set figure not to exceed for, for each community? Or is it based on our actual expenses to a particular date?
Yeah, they, they, OPM doesn't, projected allotment. We submit preliminary data as to where we fit in that allotment. And then they, each community gets a particular dollar amount based on that. So OPM has been encouraging all communities to keep track of this activity so that we try to recapture every dollar we can concerning this.
And do we know yet what that allotment would be?
I mean, I don't know the exact dollar amount. I'd have to circle back to Michael and/or Doug Coulter and/or Frank. I know it exceeds a million, but I don't know if it's much more than that. Million one, million two, it's around there.
Yeah, if you could submit that to the office when or someone, I think, then I could pass it out to the members. I think they'd be appreciative. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And that motion passes unanimously.
And that's all that we have for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Next committee to report out is the Legislative Matters Committee, Councilman Gallagnano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Honorable City of the City of West Haven, your committee on legislative matters, to whom was referred the matter of a special taxing district for the Haven Project, reports that the committee met on the 28th day of December 2020 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the motion, following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the concept bill number 5478 from the 2020 General, Connecticut General Assembly Session and hereby authorizes the mayor to submit to the West Haven State delegation such document for consideration and passage during the 2021 Connecticut General Assembly Session.
Councilman Gallagnano has brought forward Communication A from Mayor Nancy R. Rossi in regards to a special taxing district for the Haven Project. Is there a second? Councilman Bruno, Cohen, Masaro, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll move the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of Legislative Matters.
Thank you, Councilman Gallagnano. Next committee is the Tax Deferral Committee, Councilman Masaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on tax deferral, whom was referred to as a matter of an abatement of interest and penalties on taxes, report that the committee met on the 28th day of December 2020 to consider the said matter. It was unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. That the request for the abatement of interest and fees currently due as of the date of this council meeting on the 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018 grand list from Tina, Trina Nelson of 14 Easy Rudder Lane, West Haven, be approved based on the following. Tax balances must be paid within 24 weeks from the date of this meeting. All tax bills issued from this date forward must be paid when due. A good faith effort to pay a minimum of $100 a week must be established.
Councilman Masaro has brought forward Communication E from taxpayer Trina Nelson in regards to an abatement of interest and penalties on taxes. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Gallagnano, Councilman Conlin, Councilwoman Hamilton, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the Tax Deferral Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Masaro. Next committee is the Sustainability Committee, Councilwoman Finelli.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on sustainability, to whom was referred the matter of the Malloy School solar field project, reports that the committee met on the 28th day of December 2020 to consider said matter. It is the majority of opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented, resolved. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the attached lease for approximately 2.5 acres of vacant land at 255 Malloy Road for a solar ground array. The terms and conditions are hereby set in the attached lease, Communication J. Mayor Nancy R. Rossi is hereby authorized to execute said agreement.
Councilwoman Finelli has brought forward Communication G from Building Oversight Chairman Carney in regards to the Malloy School solar field project, as was read into the record. Is there a second? Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Bruno- Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilman Bruno, Councilman Cohen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention, Councilwoman Hoskies. And that motion passes by majority.
And that's all from the Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli. Next up is council as a whole, and I'll turn it over to the Majority Leader, Councilwoman Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is now 8:36. Council as a whole is in session. All members are present. We have before us Communication F from this evening's agenda from Nancy R. Rossi in regards to a public health resolution. We will read the resolution into record, and I've asked the council to help do so. Mr. Chairman.
The City of West Haven Resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in the City of West Haven, Connecticut.
Whereas racism is a structural system with multiple layers that oppress Black, Brown, Indigenous, Indigenous people of color, B-I-P-O-C, is intersectional areas such as, but not limited to, education, employment, criminal justice, housing, civil service, municipalities, mental health, and medical practices.
Whereas anti-racism is the active process of identifying and eliminating racism by committing to building healthy systems, structures, attitudes, and policies so that power is redistributed and shared equitably.
Whereas by acknowledging that systemic racism is a structural disadvantage to the conditions of our city, we commit to being anti-racist.
Whereas structural racism perpetuates disparity in job opportunities. Therefore, we will work to prevent exclusionary hiring practices and ensure the active recruitment for B-I-P-O-C.
Whereas racism involuntarily places the youth at an increasing disadvantage when faced with the unequal education resources and the recreation opportunities, which jeopardizes human development and the content, content growth in academically, physically, and mental and emotionally.
Whereas racist practices such as redlining have contributed to segregated and separated communities, resulting in disparate living conditions, restricted mobility, and unequal access to services.
Whereas racism restricts access to public spaces.
Where racism has created climate injustices for B-I-P-O-C with disproportionate exposure to environmental hazards, including not limited to air pollution contributing to a higher rate of asthma, toxic gases, and lead poisoning.
Whereas racism, whereas racism contributes to disparities in health conditions, including but not limited to asthma, cancer, infant mortality, COVID-19, mental health, trauma, diabetes, high blood pressure, and heart disease.
Whereas anti-racist work encourages the growth and success of every resident and improves community culture in the City of West Haven.
All right, now, therefore be it resolved, the mayor and city council commit all administrative departments to dismantling racism in formal and informal structures and declare racism a public health crisis in West Haven.
Be it further resolved, we are collectively committed to the following action that will help to both inspire and realize the full potential of B-I-P-O-C and every resident of the City of West Haven.
Sorry, that was me. Pro, prohibit hostile or abusive attitudes and discriminatory practices in the work environment, classrooms, municipal entities, and all public spaces by promoted, promoting anti-racism, thereby creating an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment for B-I-P-O-C. Dismantle and dissect every racist structure within our community by strengthening our leadership functions, training anti-racist policies, and diversity, diversity exercises.
Number three, research and present transparent data to create guidelines that dismantle systemic racism and that will promote diversity throughout city governance and civil service. Number four, mobilize city leadership to adopt the aforementioned policies and guidelines for creating equity in appointments, employment, child and youth services, access to public spaces, and recreational activities, thus ensuring equality of life and livelihood for all residents.
Five, establish policies and procedures with informative resources in areas such as, but not limited to, human resources, social and economic development, health and welfare services, and public safety. Six, collaborate with the Board of Education to provide resources for establishing, writing, and implementing a balanced and anti-racist curriculum, one that confronts stereotypes, biases, prejudice, and discrimination. An anti-racist curriculum teaches the economic, structural, and historical roots of power and inequality. In addition to being multicultural, it also challenges the existence of the single Eurocentric lens of education.
Seven, create a community support network with collaboration partners from neighboring communities to expand our local, state, and federal leadership outreach to help advance our cause by creating a cultural of racial diverse interaction. I make a motion to bring this out favorably.
No move.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Before bringing, before bringing this out for discussion, we have a statement from Mayor Rossi.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hamilton. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read into the record my cover letter that came with this resolution for the council agenda and for its approval. Dear Honorable Members of the City Council, enclosed please find a resolution declaring racism to be a public health crisis in the City of West Haven. This resolution begins the necessary discussions about inequality in our community and the corrective actions needed to ensure inclusion, equal opportunity, and diversity. The adoption of this formal and legal binding resolution will authorize the City of West Haven to analyze historic and current data, review current policies, and update, change, and develop new strategies that will lead to a more open, inclusive, and equitable community for all of our residents. People of color have had more serious and chronic health ailments, including higher rates of cancer, high blood pressure, and heart disease, infant and maternal mortality, and a higher rate of COVID-19 infection and death. Systemic racism creates obstacles to obtaining equal access to education, employment, healthcare, housing, criminal justice, and recreational opportunities. In June 2020, and I'm going to go, the name has been changed around. The real name of, of this committee is the Community Alliance of West Haven and members appointed. The mission of this committee is to help move West Haven to a community, West Haven to a community where inclusion, equality, diversity are not only sought, but expected. I want to thank the members for their hard work in developing this resolution, and I look forward to working with the committee and the community at large as we continue this difficult but critical work. I respectfully request your approval of this important resolution, and sincerely, Nancy R. Rossi, Mayor. I just have a few other comments that I have jotted down earlier today. And then also, as this meeting began, I want to point out, I did appoint this committee back in June of 2020. I have never been prouder of any committee that I have appointed, and I have been able to appoint a few. So, I just want to get the record straight, if you will. It's been stated that, you know, there, there aren't a certain group in this committee. I didn't look for political. To me, this isn't political. This is something that has to be done. It had nothing to do with an R, a D, a U, a P, a Q, whatever you want to call. It had nothing to be done. So, that is not what I was looking for when I put this committee together. I was looking for people from different, you know, thought patterns, different walks of life that would do hard work. And I got what I was looking for because they have done very hard work, have spent a lot of times away from their family and friends to make changes to this resolution that I must say, Chairwoman Trinay McGee brought forward at an earlier council meeting, and she just spoke about it briefly because it wasn't on the agenda. And I had her send it to me, and then I forwarded to Lee Ternan, and the committee that was formed has worked on it and made some necessary changes. So, I want to point out that the committee was not a political committee, so it's not designated by the letter after their name. But that being said, I know people are concerned that everyone on that committee is from the same political party. No, they are not. And that's where I'm going to leave that. As far as inviting other people or telling or bringing out at a meeting recommendations for other people on this committee. First off, I think the nine men and women on this committee have done a fabulous job. I can't thank them enough for all the hard work. And the hard work they're going to continue to do is, because please understand, I don't believe and I don't think the committee believes, I want to speak for them. This is a living, breathing document that is going to have to be changed. You know, we don't just put it on the shelf now and then leave it alone. It's going to be something that's going to have to be changed, I think, monthly, quarterly, however it works, whenever changes are there. So, I know there was comments about healthcare professionals be put on and, and Board of Education members be put on. Number one, I talk to our Health Director daily, repeatedly, most days, weekends, holidays, doesn't matter. So, I'm in contact with the healthcare community. The other thing I want to point out is all of you sat as the council members tonight. You had invited guests. You had Ken Carney, you had the attorney for the solar project. You had Lee Ternan. That doesn't mean that those three people have to become part of the city council or any committee. Committees can invite special guests, speakers. If you want somebody to come and report out from the Board of Education, I really do believe that if you contacted Superintendent Cavallaro, he'd be more than happy to provide you. I don't want to speak for him, but I can't believe he wouldn't. Anybody, so you can get different opinions and people to testify out in their own specialty, if you will, without, you know, putting them on the committee. What you didn't want is a committee of 20 people. I mean, I, I don't think you would move as quickly. And I know that this doesn't seem quickly, but truly, every single one of you should be very proud of yourself with the work that you have done and really in the quick time that it has been done. Because unfortunately, government moves slowly. I can't reiterate that enough. I get frustrated some days because you think something's going to go through and, you know, next year you're still talking about it. So, it's been months, but it hasn't been that many months. And I, again, want to commend. So, I also want everyone to know, in case you don't, who the members of the committee are, and I want the public to know. I am the ex-officio member. As mayor, I'm ex-officio to all boards and committees, not just this one. So, that's why, like, when I don't come to a council meeting, I'm not marked absent. I am, I'm marked when I attend. Same thing with Board of Education, same thing with Community Alliance of West Haven. And that is because I couldn't possibly be at every committee meeting for all the committees and boards and commissions that we have. So, I tried to get to it. Unfortunately, the meetings were scheduled where I already had a commitment in place. So, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. But I would like to thank the committee members. So, bear with me, the committee's not that large, it's nine members. Brandon Patterson, thank you very, very much for being an attendant or being part of this committee. The City of West Haven greatly appreciates it. Michael Last, same. Michael Last is a very busy guy, and stays very busy. And I'm very happy that he agreed to serve on this committee, and I think he's done an excellent job. Pastor Vane, another wonderful gentleman that has sat with the committee and has been in the minutes, because I have read the minutes, and has done wonderful work on behalf of the City of West Haven. Bridget Hoskies, and our Councilwoman, also has done great work on this committee, has been an attendant and has voted in the minutes with several good ideas. And this, this committee has done great, great work. Deputy Chief Fleming, and also Chief Perno of the West Haven Police Department, again, have been at the meetings, has offered dialogue, has discussed things with the committee. Secretary of the Committee, Liz Johnston. She too, she's, to me, has one of the hardest jobs. Anybody who has to take the minutes, that's not easy, especially when people weigh it all, it's just not easy. So, done a great, great job. Thank you for your service. Vice Chair Robin Wat Hamilton, thank you for your service. Vice Chair and Councilwoman and Majority Leader tonight. Thank you very, very much and for your commitment to our City of West Haven. And Chairwoman Trinay McGee, you have been a wonderful asset to this committee. You have chaired and, and steered this committee and have helped tremendously. I thank you very, very much, from the bottom of my heart. Because I remember that beautiful little girl down the street from me, and look where you've come now. So, I've known her today for a very, very long time. But one thing I want to point out that I think is important about this committee, everyone worked collaboratively together. Everyone, instead of saying there's one shining star or two shining stars, because usually, you know, have a committee and one person doesn't come or doesn't. This was all shining stars. And I believe because they had the City of West Haven at heart, they want to make changes, changes for everybody, treat people equally and fairly. So, I honestly hope they are going to continue their work. I believe they are. And once again, I know I said it in my opening letter, but I urge all of you, please, to vote for this resolution. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Rossi. I like to call Corporation Council Attorney Lee Ternan for any statement that he may have.
I, I mean, I don't have any statement, as always. I only provide the legal advice on things, and the council votes the way the council deems best in their conscience and what's best for the city. So, I reviewed the resolution. I had some law students review it as well. I reviewed resolutions for other communities. I can find no legal impediment if the council so desires to approve the resolution. And I don't think necessarily appropriate for me to editorialize or comment further than that.
Thank you, Ternan. We have a statement from Chairwoman McGee from the Community Alliance of West Haven and Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hamilton. The West Haven Community Alliance Committee worked to construct, build, and edify a resolution that not only reflects the true values of who we say we are, but also challenges the core principles of what our city was founded upon. And the statement that was founded alongside our city was "No Desperandum", which means do not despair. This alliance was organized by the mayor, and I believe she chose each person because they've passionately been vocal from beginning, from when we first started this protest up until now. And I think many of us, all of us having worked together collectively have been challenged in ways that we have never been challenged before. The resolution was a process. It was a month-long process. But imagine coming together with people who have different beliefs, different ideas, ideologies, and working together to create a document that reflects our entire city. That's what we did in a small time. I believe that we were, we will, and we have been dedicated to working tirelessly to make this city a better place, one that will strive to be anti-racist and racially diverse from, from multiple municipal entities. Our goals were all youth-centered, which is a huge reflection of our city. We are the youngest town, we are, but the oldest settlement. And so, that right there was intersecting and also very, very powerful that every single person on the committee has a wholehearted dedication to youth, and you can see that in the work that we all do. We've all made the goal to be the action steps. We are the community, the committee that will help to mobilize our action steps that we read earlier. And we all is to move forward with these actions. And we all is to move forward with these action steps. And although this will be a long, long road ahead, it's one that we are all willing and committed to traveling. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman and Chairwoman McGee. I just have a short statement to say. This is a very, it's very sensitive, it's very emotional resolution. Whenever you put racism, race into anything, it affects all of us. It's a long time coming, but this is our mission statement to bring forward our city in the right direction. We join over 17 other cities in Connecticut and counting. And I'm glad that we're the council. We were chosen to be the council to just make West Haven a better place. That's all I want to say. With that being said, I'm going to open this up for discussion. And I would like to go District, District Vice District. Please state any comments or any questions that you may have at this time. I'm going to start with District One, Councilwoman Hosky.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hamilton. Well, first I want to say that I support this resolution 150%. I think it is a long time coming. When the mayor, I mean, one of, I want to correct some of the record too, Mayor Rossi, is that, you know, the mayor did not form this committee to create a resolution. She formed this committee based on a need in the city when people brought to her the idea that the committee can make change. We could help create change, drive change, be the change. I find it absolutely disgusting and completely disgusting that people have taken this opportunity to go on social media and do grandstanding and trying to make this resolution about, you know, the R and the D and the U and the I. This committee and its work was based on having a city that's anti-racist. So when you talk about minority representation, you're talking about the blacks and the browns and the people of color. Those are the minorities that need representation on this committee. And then we go in there and we try to do that work to make their lives better. And this city council is bipartisan. It has the Republicans and the Democrats. And the city council with the Rs and the Ds then, then vote on that. Like that in and of itself is where the R and the D comes into play. But for people to say that the mayor didn't do her job or it is just ridiculous. That in and of itself is to me extremely political. And I am a mother of children of color. And I will tell you that there is not a day that goes by that my child or my children do not face racism in this town. My daughter can't walk into a store and not have something happen that leads to her to believe that she is being judged by the color of her skin. And that should move people to want to make a change. And to say that the Board of Ed isn't represented on the, on the Community Alliance. Well, if you read the resolution, it says collaborate with the Board of Education. It says right there, we're not telling the Board of Education to do anything. The resolution says in the writing that we will collaborate with them. Does the same thing about the Health Department and the Human Resource. So all of this banter, all of this sensationalism that the Community Alliance was built on, it's in all Democrats. It's just ridiculous. Do your work. Mayor Rossi answered a call that has been dialing for years in this town. And if you don't agree with it, then you're part of the problem. And it disgusts me. It absolutely disgusts me. And to think that we're being asked to hold this so that the public can, can get input. This has been going on since June. There's some accountability on the public to have gotten involved. Those meetings were posted, they could have sent letters, they could have reached out to their councilpeople. The councilman, you are responsible. If you didn't ever, if you didn't give feedback to, to the chairman of that committee, if you didn't send feedback to me or to Robin, that is on you. But to say that this should be held is, it blows my mind. It absolutely blows my mind. But I'm going to tell you a quick little story. My daughter was probably in second grade and I had to go pick her up early. And when I went into the school, I won't name schools, but I went into the school to get her. And I said, could you get so and so on? They're like, well, who are you? I'm her mother. You're her mother? Yes, I'm her mother. Oh, did you adopt her? How many parents can actually say that they stood in a, in a, in a school's office? Then they knew who my daughter was, but they didn't believe I was her mother and asked if she was adopted just by, because of the color of her skin. Do we think that they were racist? I don't know what she was. But I know that that question isn't asked to every mother in this town. I know that question isn't even thought to be a concept. It, it doesn't even formulate. If she had walked out and had been the picture person of what Bridget Hosky's daughter was supposed to look like. Those are the things that need to change. Those are those little itty-bitty things that need to change that can then turn into something magnificent where all children and all parents can just walk into the school and be children and parents. Nobody is judged. Nobody is judged. And I just find it insane that we are using this as a Republican Democrats. No, no. I support it 150%. And if I could vote 10 times, I would vote 10 times, yes. Thank you, Chairman Hamilton.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hosky. Councilman Conlon, do you have anything to remark?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. I just want to say to everyone involved in putting this resolution together, and especially to Councilwoman McGee. Job well done and thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Conlon. Councilwoman Johnston?
Thank you. I would like to thank the mayor for initiating this committee. I want to thank everybody on the Community Alliance of West Haven, especially Chairwoman McGee for her leadership. But really proud of everyone on the committee for the work that we've started. And that I think is the operative word. This resolution is a starting place. It is not a destination. It is not a document to put on the shelf. It's a living document and it's the catalyst for really important, long overdue work. I want to also clear up or just sort of, we want, this is the Community Alliance, we want the community involved. This is a partnership with the community. So while we didn't need necessarily community input to be able to create the document to start the work, we certainly need the community input to do the work and to be involved and to have those voices and those stories sort of help shape and guide the work that we do. And so want to just be clear that this is going to need to be a community effort. I also would like to just quote Ibram X. Kendi, who is a historian who I have been using sort of as a guide and doing a lot of reading from. And he says, "Racial inequity is a problem of bad policy, not bad people." And if we could start with that premise that, you know, anyone who's feeling like this is an attack on people to think about, maybe before you dispute the validity of any of this, you, you, you start from a place of inquiry before you just deny or dispute that we have a problem. And if you think about this as a problem of policy, then it might be easier for people to get on board. So I just want to thank everyone that's been involved. And obviously I will be voting for this and hope that it passes unanimously for everyone in West Haven. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnston. Councilman Galagnano?
Thank you, Chairwoman Hamilton. My only comment is, again, I will add that with everybody that great job by Chairwoman McGee on this. And kudos to the mayor for putting this committee together. And I, as every, I'm not sure about everybody else, but myself, full support of this 150%.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Masara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to thank everybody who was involved in this. Great job, worked hard. Mayor, good job. Again, you did another step for the West Haven to take a big, big step towards, to make us better. As far as I'm concerned, it's a long time coming. Something had to be done. And I just got one thing to say. My personal opinion about this all, I always say when I was brought up, we're all human beings. God made us, we're all the same. We all bleed the same blood and I don't believe in the difference in people. And God bless all of you for doing a great job.
Thank you, Councilman Masara. Councilwoman McGee?
I just want to thank the Community Alliance again for sending in, I mean, notes, questions, things that literally helped us make this document better, rewording things, shifting things around. And also to every single person who continued to come to the meetings, although they were challenged. Like it was a challenge to do this. And everyone continued to come every single meeting, although they knew it was going to be difficult. I have to shout out Liz and Brandon because they, they, they were master editors. Things like grammar, where to put words, where to move words to, how to reframe things. How can we include definitions in the document so that people understand what it says? That was hours of work and I got to really sit in and listen on some of that. And it was amazing to see people work together that way. And also too, I just want to share this story. I, I visited my great-grandmother who's 98 years old. And as I was talking to her about her life, the one thing that she shared with me was she, was there was a time where black men were disappearing. And, and so I said, well, well, do you know anyone? Because for about 20 minutes, she was wrapping me up in this story. And I said, well, do you know anyone who disappeared? And she said, yeah, my uncle Melvin disappeared. He was kidnapped and we had never seen him again. And he was a very smart man who taught me French and, you know, she's telling me this story. And so as I say, I go to say, okay, can I share this on social media? I always ask her permission because she's, she, she is concerned about her face being on Facebook. That's what she calls it. So I said, can I share this? And she said, no, because I don't want the KKK coming after me. Like, you know, they're crazy. And so I became overwhelmingly emotional because, you know, in today's society, things have changed and progressed a bit. But in her mind, in her space, there was still this level of fear that was associated with racism and with her experiences. And it was even, and even more like a driving force for why this resolution is important. Because we are a reflection and representatives of people in our community who still live in these spaces of fear that have to literally be dismantled and worked against and, and changed for the livelihood of our city. So when I went to go tell her, oh, you know, it's a little different today, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to worry about that today. It was hard to convince this 98-year-old woman of that because that was her, her living experience. And so that's why this document is not only essential, it has to be a living, breathing one. Because although our experiences today, which it is, you know, are significantly different, they're almost one in the same as well. They're almost very, very congruent. I 100% support this document. And I'm just really grateful for every single person who called to ask questions. And I was able to have conversations with and grow and learn from and with. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just impressed with 98 years old. That alone. Thank you. Councilwoman Finelli?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton. First of all, I just want to commend the mayor for seeing the need for this in the city and putting together a group of people with very diverse perspectives and different experiences. I attended the December 2nd meeting and I can say that it was obvious that while everybody was very different, they cared deeply about making positive changes in the city. The wording of this was given so much thought and just analyzed and picked apart in terms of the tone and the connotation of each word and how this was, would be interpreted. So I want to thank everyone involved in that committee. I know how hard, well, I, I know from that one meeting, you know, how hard you guys worked. So I can only imagine the countless hours that you guys put into this over the past month. I know it wasn't easy and months ago, this was something you were really passionate about. And I'm so happy that it's finally, you know, getting voted on. And I, I think this is so important and I think this is something that is really going to positively impact so many people in our community for years to come. So I'm 1,000% in support of this. And thank you again to all of you who worked on this. It really made me proud to be, you know, on city council with you guys. So, thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Finelli. Councilman Bruno?
Thank you. I just want to thank all the members that were on the committee and the mayor for all the hard work that was put into this. I know it was countless hours. You all did a great job and I am in support of it. And I like to treat people the way I want to be treated. So we're all the same. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I don't want to sound repetitious, but to all the people that worked on this, on this resolution and Mayor Rossi, my hats off to you for forming this committee. Job well done. I want to, first of all, I want to clear the table. Okay? Let me say that I am absolutely inclined to vote for this resolution and I want to vote for this resolution. This is a little emotional for me because although, although I'm, I'm not a legal, medical or health professional, I believe racism exists. I may not walk around with black, brown or tan skin, but as a proud Jew who has endured antisemitism throughout my life, especially in my younger years, I know what prejudice is. Now, I by no means am comparing anti-racism with prejudice, but I can at least empathize with the hurt that causes both physical and mental distress. Now, with that said, excuse me. With that said, my remarks are not intended to make anyone here or viewing feel uncomfortable. Although I've been told this resolution before us does and should make us feel uncomfortable. And I agree with that. Regardless, I know some may not take my comments in the way that I mean them to be, which is most supportive. Furthermore, please know my comments are to ensure transparency for what I believe is one of the most, one of the most important motions this council will pass or hopefully pass as a council. Some of these same comments I've expressed in part to four members of the Community Alliance, including Councilwoman McGee, who has done a tremendous job leading this effort. Now, here's just my remarks, my concerns. We can respectfully disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable. And we don't have to point fingers or we don't have to make assumptions. I'm just going to state my feelings here. I think it concerns me, although I respect the responses that have been given to me, that there were no city, state or federal health officials that were on the committee or I don't know how much they were consulted, although I understand. were on the committee or I don't know how much they were consulted, although I understand the mayor has been in contact with them based on her comments tonight. But again, from my outside view of this, I do find it concerning. I also understand that the state of Connecticut is generating their own resolution. If so, will it, could it supersede parts or all parts of this city resolution? I don't know. We'll see. Since this is a legally binding resolution and some people on this council did not think it was legally binding at first, but it is a legally binding resolution, the definition being that it's a contract with agreed upon terms that include actions that are required or prohibited, you know, so it is legally binding. I think all of us would expect regardless, to a large extent, perhaps even require, you know, if it's an impact study, it's no different, you know, if we want to recommend or something comes to us, or proposal comes to us that basically leverages this resolution, that, you know, we would want some type of impact study, should it be the advantages, disadvantages, the costs, because even though with all respect to, to our Corporation Council, which pointed out that there are currently no costs beyond the risk manager, and if there are, that he will let us know in the future or via a proposed budget, well, you know, just like a pension study or a parking study or whatever, we can expect it and rightfully so. I don't think it's a bad thing. I just think rightfully so that we can expect to be transparent with, with our, with our taxpayers. Like, you know what? To eliminate anti-racism, it's important. And with that, there are costs involved, but those costs are infinitely important for us to move forward. So I, I really would say with respect that there are costs involved. You know, should it be, and I know this was already mentioned, you know, collaborating with the Board of Education or if it's, you know, if the police, let's say they need more cameras. I mean, when you talk about these types of activities, you know, with them, you know, we may not be able to do it all at once, but it's to make a beginning, to make a start. And I know a couple of council people tonight said this is only a start and I agree with that. You know, if we're going to research, present transparent data to create guidelines, that's great because the most important thing that we can do is help create that diversity through all of our city government and civil service. But, you know, once again, we don't anticipate the extra costs of the city, but my feeling is, let's not kid ourselves with all respect. In the next budget, there very well could be, probably would be some legally binding requirements or requirements that we might need to consider to fund if we are going to quote unquote dismantle racism wherever it exists. It may potentially, no one has a crystal ball here, require us to divert funding from some areas to ensure funding for other areas. Of course, this assumes no or minimal increase in tax rates. Again, I'm just making it real. And again, I want to vote yes for this. I've always wanted to vote yes for this. And I think the people I spoke to, I've said the same thing over and over. Now, with that said, now that the draft let, excuse me, now that the draft ordinance has been approved by the Alliance and it was only recently approved on December twenty-fourth by our Corporation Council, like we do with most other ordinances, let's allow our residents the opportunity to read the resolution, regardless if they input it into it or not, or they had the opportunity to input into it or not, regarding if they knew the meetings, how easily it was act, to access the meetings or what have you, regards who was on the committee. This is not about ours, us, these or eyes, absolutely not. This is not political and it shouldn't be political. And in my eyes, it never was political. So with that, give the public the opportunity to read the final resolution. Give them the opportunity after they've had the opportunity to read the final resolution to address the council via the emails that are sent to us or contact your district council person. Doing otherwise may have the unintended consequences of all the hard work that was done here, which I appreciate and respect, of not being open and transparent to the very diverse communities that we serve. Again, this is not, this is, and I think the mayor said the best, it, this had nothing to, this had, what this, what this resolution has to do with is, to me, it's ethical, it's humanity. It's not, it's not, it goes far beyond color of skin. It goes into being the right thing to do as a community. But again, let them read the resolution. As I stated, I'm inclined and I want to vote for this resolution. However, before we move to evoke and for the sanctity and the integrity of our process, we should allow public health officials to weigh in as they did already, God bless, on the contents of this ordinance, as well as to give our constituents an opportunity to comment on the final written format. I respectfully ask, what's two weeks, I think our next meeting, I believe is January tenth, to allow for absolute transparency. I kindly encourage and hope that my colleagues on the other side of the aisle will make a motion to table until the next meeting to take the vote, whereas I would be proud to second that. This ordinance is just so too important to be unfairly accused or to be perceived to be lacking inclusivity. Once again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Trenae. Thank the entire team. You guys have done a tremendous job and I just want the public to understand what we've written here, why we've written it. Give them a chance to weigh in. This is too important. And once again, thank you so much for letting me speak this evening, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Attorney Lee, are you still with us?
Yes.
Can you speak to us about the financial cost of this resolution, please?
Yes. I fully expect that the council in the very next budget session, in the budget session coming up, beginning with, with the mayor's presentation of the budget, that the council is going to ask the questions and analyze whether or not their resolution is being implemented in the next budget. I, I, I fully expect that when the heads of various departments, especially the Public Health Department come forward, that the council, when they're reviewing their budget, are going to ask, did, did anyone give you a copy of the approved resolution and what changes, if any, have you made? And are you looking to make additional changes that cost money? One of the reasons why, there were a lot of reasons why I didn't find a legal impact to this, but I think I treat this motion like you would, you could be, the council could say that they're in favor of handicap accessibility. You don't have to delay that vote. I think it's pretty, I hope it's universal that everybody would want handicap accessibility. But yes, after the fact, Councilman Cohen is right, you're going to have to look at the cost of implementation and you're going to have to try. There might be an instance where the way you create handicap accessibility isn't perfect. You know, just like we do with special education, it's not all perfect, but you try to be inclusive. You know, we're at the hundred anniversary of women suffrage. If you're, say that fifty percent of the population can now be voters? Yep. Is that going to have an impact? Does that mean you have to have a study? You know, I, I would suggest no, but I would suggest that the registered voters might have to come back to you and say, look, to implement this, it's, it's going to require X, Y and Z and we'll have to see what expense we can afford and how we implement it might be impacted. Lead paint, you could be against lead paint in residential homes, but to do a true impact, you know, you got to study every house. Does that mean you don't have to have a position on lead paint? Smoking in public buildings, nobody studied the impact of smoking, banning smoking in public buildings. People worried again about public health. So I don't think the two things that the councilor is, are exclusive. And I would expect that if this council votes favorably on this resolution, that this council, this elected council will take the responsibility to address that this resolution is being considered, is being implemented by both the spirit and the letter in its, in the city's deliberations. And if I have mentioned other councilors, I expect it to be implemented across the board. I expect consider whether or not they're implementing in mental health communities. When you implement public health, when you implement how people pay their tax bills, I think we should just consider, you know, making improvements everywhere where we can and implement the resolution. I don't think they're exclusive. I don't think the, the responsibility of the council ceases after you pass this resolution, but I don't think there's any legal impediment really to approving the resolution and continuing to, trying to achieve the goals that are articulated within the resolution. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
Thank you, Council, thank you Attorney Lee. We are going to move on to Councilwoman O'Connor.
Thank you, Chairwoman. First off, I'd like to thank the, the committee and the mayor and especially Chairwoman McGee. I know there must have been countless sleepless nights and prayerful consideration and thank you so much for all of your hard work. I am voting for this and I'm voting with my heart. The, one of the reasons I became a councilperson was to make a stronger, better West Haven. And I really feel this resolution is just the first step in helping pull all of us up together in this community to make a better, stronger West Haven. And that's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Connor. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I apologize, my internet is down, so I am doing this via phone call. First of all, first of all, I one hundred percent am in favor of this resolution. It has been a long time coming. I applaud each and everyone who has been involved with this, including the mayor, including the public, for bringing it out, for it to be noticed and to move this forward. So yes, I am one hundred percent voting for this. However, I, it took six months. I do agree with Councilman Cohen that if we do wait till the next meeting so that the public can see, we, we started this process talking about transparency and having this, waiting two more weeks to have this put out so that the public can see it and possibly give some input before we vote on it at the next meeting. Two more weeks to me is, is not going to hurt anything. We're not going to be hiding anything. We're not going to show we're hiding anything. We're going to be putting it out there. But either way, I will be voting for this one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Chairman Quagliani?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton. And again, I want to echo my, my thanks to the mayor, the committee and really the committee taking the tough road, right? So the committee worked for the last several months and drafted a resolution that was submitted to this council. And I, and I'm sure as others, took Councilwoman McGee up on offering any, any input I had at the time. And I had input. And, and, and she and the committee listened to my thoughts and listened to other thoughts and, and really worked it to make sure that the product that came out of that committee was unanimous. So again, the mayor and, and Councilwoman McGee articulated, the members of that committee. And just by its nature, it's uncomfortable. But those people came together for, for a single purpose and agreed on a single document. In my mind, to wordsmith the document now would be a disservice to everything this committee has done so far. This document is a beginning. It's not the final document. It's not a final document. It's a framework of a lot of work that has to be done. You know, we are approving big, general buckets of things that we potentially would like to look at. But we are not, there are no specific action items here. There is no, there's no action item that says we need to hire people or we need to do that or we need to do that. But quite honestly, if they're just words on the paper, to me, that's hollow. If we're not going to take any action after we pass, pass the document, there's no sense in my mind even passing the document. So I'm extremely comfortable moving this document tonight. Again, this was a, a, a committee's work over several months that is a public committee and the, the community input is critical to the work going forward. So we need the community, but we need the community going forward to now come together and work on some of these things that are framework issues when, within this document. I want to offer a personal and then a professional perspective. And when you do this work, the one thing I learned that everything you say rings hollow unless you do a little introspection. And I did a little introspection. So, and I came to realize, you know, the following. Like many, I'm shaped by my individual experiences throughout my life and I recognize that my experiences are just that. They're my experiences. They're completely unique to me. They aren't anyone else's experiences. Others' experiences likely are very different than mine and their experiences are not always equal. I know what I know and I need to be open to what I don't know. I have blind spots, just as I'm sure as many others do, and I need to challenge my preconceptions or they will challenge me. So for me, this is the introspective and a good starting point as I and we move this work forward. As Councilwoman Hamilton said, there are many cities and towns across the state and across this country that have moved forward with similar resolutions. So as government officials, we took an oath, that oath to represent all of our residents to the best of our abilities. We put a great deal of importance on a financial audit that we do each and every year to ascertain if our financial decisions and our policies are prudent and sound. And that is very important. But we need to put the same importance on establishing a yearly governance audit in order to quantify our decisions and reexamine our policies, procedures, practices, ordinances, and our budgetary decisions to validate that they are open and accessible, inclusive and equitable and do not pose any unintentional disparities. That's the work that we have ahead of us. I can't do it alone. We can't do it alone. The Community Alliance can't do it alone. We need the community and that's where the work starts. So again, this is a framework document that it would be a disservice in my mind to change that after this alliance has worked so hard on it. But it's a starting point and that's where we as a community now buckle down and get to work together. And I am in favor of moving the question this evening, Ms. Majority Leader. Thank you.
The chairman has asked to move discussion. I would have to ask if we're in favor of that?
Madam Chair?
There's something on the table. The chairman has put something on the table. So now we're going, I'm going to ask.
Robin, you need a second.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Do I have to ask for a discussion?
No.
No. Can I ask for a roll call from the clerk, please?
Certainly. Councilman Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky?
Absolutely.
Councilman William X. Conlon?
With all my heart, yes.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Johnston?
Yes.
Councilman Mitch Gallinano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilman Peter Massaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Trenae McGee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen?
Yes.
And Chairman Ron Quagliani?
Yes.
We have thirteen in favor.
We have 13 in favor and no opposed, Chairwoman.
I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please. Madam Chairwoman.
Could the clerk call for a roll, I mean, do a roll call vote, please, on this resolution?
Okay, so did I just, what did I just do? A roll call?
You did a connection to the end discussion.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
No, 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 don't be.
I just got a little confused. Okay.
Councilman Gary Donovan. Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Yes.
Councilman William X. Conlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Elizabeth Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilman Peter Massaro.
Yes.
Councilwoman Trenae McGee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crystal Finelli.
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Yes.
Councilman Barry Lee Cohen.
Yes.
And Chairman Ron Quagliani.
Yes.
Okay, again, we have 13 yes and zero no's.
Wonderful. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to state that the resolution declaring racism, a public health crisis in the city of West Haven has passed unanimously. That concludes the council as, as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader Hamilton. Adoption of ordinance is previously presented. There are none. Council liaison reports. You know, Councilwoman Johnston.
No vote really since the last Board of Ed meeting was canceled, but I did want to thank everyone at West Haven High School, the security guards, the students, anybody that was involved in the Toys for Joy program for all of their hard work for families at West Haven. So, thank you.
Are there any other council liaison reports? Seeing none, turn the page. New business? Seeing no new business? Councilman Cohen.
If, if Lee's still on the line, just a question. Is there any, I know that it's not a perfect world, but any update at all regarding the Armstrong building? I know you had interns working on it a couple of months ago and, you know, I wasn't sure if we were going to hear from them again. I know it was your last comment to us, but any update?
Yes. So we haven't been able to get a meeting. Unfortunately, interns work. My intern will be running out of time, probably January 8. I don't know if she's going to continue with me. She's actually from Denim Matt. The headquarters of Stop and Shop is actually Quincy, which is one community over. So there was some individuals in play that were specific to that individual intern. But we are going to keep trying the ball rolling. If you could give me, not the next meeting, but two meetings from now, I think we'll probably have something to report. I think it was affected by the holidays to some degree, unfortunately. And the student got COVID themselves, so that harmed me for about some days. But I will have new students and we'll take another swing at it. So if you just, Councilman Cohen, just give me till, not next meeting, but the following meeting, I should have something to report.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Seeing none, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy and healthy new year and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilman Galagnano, second by Councilwoman Hamilton, and we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.